Is it four thirty, Mr. Bettis, or are we in the mayor?
Yes, she's in her office. Hello, I'm bored. Yes, she's on her way. She's on her way.
We're gonna wait a few minutes. Jessica's on her way. While Jessica gets here, and we'll just move the agenda around to accommodate this. So I'm gonna go ahead and call this meeting to order. It's four thirty-five, and today's the twenty-second of August, 2022.
Yes, Mayor. Mayor Nori Garza here. Mayor Pro Tem Ruben Plata.
Here.
Councilman Albiel Flores.
Present.
Councilman Alberto Vela.
Here.
Mayor, we have established quorum. We are still waiting on Councilwoman Jessica Ortega.
Okay, thank you. The next item is invocation and pledge of allegiance.
Yes, if I can have everyone please stand for the invocation, pledge allegiance. Heavenly Father, we thank you for today, for all your blessings that we have received, and for successful outcomes of our community. We ask for your guidance in our decisions. Enlighten our minds in every decision that we make. Bless our plans, programs, and projects so that we may achieve our objectives. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, you may be seated.
The next item is disclosures of conflict of interest. Were there any? Okay, thank you. We're gonna move on to presentations, but I'm gonna... I'm gonna move on to the report from the chamber. Ms. Nodikas, you can go first, please.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So, we are now planning for our annual awards. It's dated for October thirteenth. So, right now, we have closed the deadline to accept nominations. This event will be at the Mission Event Center. The nominees for annual awards will be announced in the next three weeks, but I did bring a copy for you guys to take with you. We will be having two ribbon cuttings tomorrow, both for car washes on Sherry Road. So, the first one's gonna be at eleven a.m. with Go Car Wash, and the one in the afternoon at four thirty is gonna be with Quick Quack Car Wash. So, we hope you can join us and make sure we get our car washes on Sherry Road. This Wednesday, we do have our Lunch and Learn, and it's... The topic is Winter Texan Economic Update. We did invite the Winter Texan Update, Kristy Collier, to come and join us, and so we're really excited about it, and that's gonna be taking care at the seed building. And we are now wrapping up our EDA grant that we were awarded. It's a merit project, so we were able to impact about forty businesses. So, it's coming to an end, but we do plan to put in a report, an impact report, to share with our leadership in our community. And ballots have been mailed out to the members. If a member did not receive their ballot, please give me a call, and I'd be happy to send you an electronic one. So, ballot season, voting, will be open until August thirty-first. And that's all I have for this evening.
Thank you. So, we're gonna move back to item number one, the Foye Supermarket Recognition. Ms. Lermah.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. At this time, I'd like to invite our longstanding friend of the community, Mr. Pete Charles, to please join me up here with the friends. I'd like to say something a little bit about Foye's here. A place where you'd be treated with kindness and where you could get more with less is how many of the customers would describe their favorite neighborhood grocery store, better known as Foye's Supermarket. Located along the Expressway and Conway Avenue in Mission, the store has served the needs of locals with affordable prices since nineteen eighty-two. The store was opened by Foy Johnston as an expansion of his popular Globe Supermarket in McAllen. Mr. Charles has spent his entire career working for Globe Supermarket and Foye Supermarket since nineteen seventy-six. Throughout his time with the supermarkets, he's continued to instill a sense of family with his employees as well as his customers. Foye's has always been a huge partner in our community. They've donated... They've donated their valuable time and money helping the fire and the police departments, the schools, our local Boys and Girls Club, and every family-oriented event held in Mission. Gabayo, which I'd like to ask for the graphic to please go up. Gabayo, whose Foye's well-recognized mascot was at most of our city events. Gabayo was at the Mission Museum, at the Mission Event Center, at our Christmas lighting, in the parade with our school kids, our Parks Crews, and even with Beto Salinas outside. Not only will we miss Gabayo, but we will miss Pete Charles and his dedicated employees at our community events. Foye's has closed its doors permanently since last Friday, August nineteenth, marking the end of an era for the locally-owned business. We know that this was a heart-rending decision to close shop after forty years. We understand the pandemic, the supply change, and the state of the economy contributed to your decision. Mr. Charles will continue to work at his Brownsville location for now, but has plans to retire soon to be able to enjoy more time with his grandchildren and his family. We wish Mr. Charles the best of luck in all of his future endeavors and know that the City of Mission and the community of Mission will certainly miss your friendly smile, your friendly attitude, and of course, the great personality that Foye's contributed to our community. Thank you for all your hard work and your dedication. We have a very special plaque too. Absolutely. Absolutely. And family, please join us. Well, we understand that it takes a village, and certainly, Foye's was stronger because you did it together. You did it as a family, and we're so proud of you. So, congratulations to all of you. And we know that you won't be far. And we know you have roots in the community. You have roots here at the City of Mission with your son, Pete. So, we'd like to also invite the rest of your family that's here, please join us. We'd like to take a picture with the council as Mayor has a presentation also for you. They're gonna actually come up here, so if you'll come down this way. Right here in the front. Please join us on this side as well. Mayor, join us right up here.
Guys, just wanna thank everybody, the City of Mission. I'm gonna go far. You're all my life. Thank all the sports, police, firearms, everybody. You guys are always here for us when we need to help, so. Hard. Very hard. All your life. It's miserable, it's miserable. It's time. You got it, it's time, it's time. I just wanna thank everybody here for backing us up, appreciate... Just support from everybody for so many years, so. By the way, my brothers and sisters, they were there at the store. I don't know, y'all probably know them more than you know me because I was in and out a lot. I did without a lot, and I couldn't stand it without my family. At one time, we had... We were four brothers. At one time, all four brothers were working together, so that was so awesome. It's a family thing, it's a family thing. Anyway, thank you so much again.
Thank you.
And I wanna take this time to express my personal gratitude because I was involved with Mission Junior Service League for many, many years, and Foye's was right there with us every year, every Thanksgiving, every Christmas. So, many, many families were impacted by the generosity of Foye's, and I wanna thank you for that from the bottom of my heart. Thank you.
The next item is the departmental reports. Are there any questions? Oh, I'm sorry. We're gonna go to the proclamation for Childhood Cancer Awareness Month, I'm sorry.
Mayor, Council, good afternoon. The proclamation reads as follows. Whereas childhood cancer is the leading cause of death by disease in children, whereas one in two-hundred-and-eighty-five children in the United States will be diagnosed by their twentieth birthday, whereas forty-six children per day, or sixteen thousand seven-hundred-and-ninety children per year, are diagnosed with cancer in the United States, whereas there are approximately forty thousand children on active treatment at any given time, whereas the average age of diagnosis is six years old compared to sixty-six years for adults' cancer diagnosis. Eighty percent of childhood cancer patients are diagnosed late and with metastatic disease. Whereas in the last twenty years, only four new drugs have been approved by the FDA to specifically treat childhood cancer. Whereas hundreds of nonprofit organizations at the local and national level, including Greater Gold Foundation, Super Rami, and the American Childhood Cancer Association, are helping children with cancer and their families cope through education, emotional, and financial support. Whereas also observing and declaring the month of September as Childhood Cancer Awareness Month, and to encourage the wearing of the color gold or yellow to raise awareness to this cancer. Now, therefore, we, the City Council of the City of Mission, do hereby proclaim September twenty-two as Childhood Cancer Awareness Month and invite the community on Wednesday, September seventh, seven-thirty p.m. at twelve-hundred-Eighth Street, which is the Police Department Courtyard, to celebrate the Mission Police Department Superheroes Unite Childhood Cancer Awareness Event. Proclaim on this the twenty-second day of August, 2022.
Move for approval?
Second.
There's a motion and a second to authorize the Childhood Awareness Month. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And all opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously, five-zero.
We have Chief Torres here, and we have Ms. Anita Herina. Nanette Ortiz, I think, from the Critical Foundation, and that way, they'll be here accepting the proclamation.
Does anyone wanna come up and say anything?
It's quite an honor to come here and speak on behalf of a very important cause. And as we know, cancer is a very dangerous disease. And so, not only the Police Department, but also our City of Mission is in full support of this cause. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Okay, now, we're gonna go to the departmental reports. Those were in your package. Do you have any... Are there any questions or concerns? Move for approval, Mayor?
Second.
There's a motion and a second to accept the departmental reports as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously, five-zero. The next item is citizens' participation. Ms. Anna, are you...
Yes, ma'am. I am Mr. Jesús Mendoza, and he's on Zoom.
Okay. Mr. Mendoza, go ahead. Your name and address for the record, please.
I'm sorry, can you hear me? Hello?
We can barely hear you.
Oh, okay. What about here? Can you hear me?
Yes, that's better, thank you.
Okay, thank you. May I start now?
Yes, you may.
Okay, thank you very much. This comment includes information that may be used to protect our children and to prevent suicide on police officers. My name is Jesús Mendoza, and my phone is nine-five-six-five-eight-three-seven-eight-twelve. I have been homebound for more than ten years with light-threatening electro-sensitivity EHS, which is caused and aggravated by the same micro irradiation reaching children at school and reaching police officers at work. Even the low levels of radiation reaching my place aggravate my EHS. I have been violently ill several times, I'm sleep deprived and in pain all the time. This is a horrible way to die. My EHS has been recognized by federal anesthetisms and vicuarts as a physical medical condition and as a disability because most doctors are in the dark when the Nile of EHS and other harm caused by radiation. Without knowing it, millions are suffering from EHS. EHS proves conclusively that the wireless devices used by police officers can break the blood-brain barrier to allow toxins on the bloodstream, including lead, mercury, and medication to enter and damage the brain to cause anxiety, depression, aggressiveness, and suicidal tendencies. Police officers suffering from this harm cannot complain without risking their gun, their job, and even their license, and without risking misdiagnosing and mistreatment with harmful drugs, deadly painkillers, and harmful invasive procedures. My statement of physical disabilities details measures to protect our children and our police officers from the harm caused by micro irradiation. Copy of this document is being submitted to Mayor Ms. Nori Gonzalez-Garza, to council members, to Chief of Police, Mr. Cesar Torres, and to City Manager, Mr. Randy Perez. Hearing this information, the police officers and parents can save lives. Thank you very much for the opportunity. Respectfully, Jesús Mendoza.
Thank you, Mr. Mendoza. Is there anyone else?
I don't have anyone else at center.
Okay. We don't have any public hearings, and there are no finding and zoning recommendations, so we're gonna go to a consent agenda. Is there anything that needs to be pulled and addressed individually?
Mayor, I move to approve the consent agenda items six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, and thirteen. Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as presented, and item thirteen has a resolution number of seventeen eighty-seven. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously. We're gonna move the agenda around again. We're gonna bring up the... Item number twenty-six.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Item twenty-six is the discussion and action on proposed twenty-twenty-two tax rate. Take record vote and schedule public hearings. In accordance with the Texas Property Tax Code, City Council must propose a tax rate for the City of Mission and publish a notice of property tax rates by September first. This notice provides information about tax rates used in adopting the current tax rate, year's tax rate. The no-new revenue tax rate would impose the same amount of taxes as last year if you compare property taxes in both years. In most cases, the voter approval tax rate is the highest rate that a taxing unit can adopt without holding an election. If the proposed tax rate exceeds the no-new revenue tax rate but does not exceed the voter approval tax rate, one public hearing is required before the adoption of the tax rate. So, the calculations of the new no-new revenue tax rate is zero-point-four-eight-eight-five per one-hundred valuation. The calculated voter approval tax rate, not adjusted or unused increment rate, is zero-point-four-nine-zero-three per one-hundred valuation. The calculated voter approval rate adjusted is zero-point-five-three-eight-five per one-hundred valuation. The current tax rate for the City of Mission is zero-point-five-two-nine-nine per one-hundred valuation. And at this time, the request is... Recommendation is to keep the current tax rate at zero-point-five-two-nine-nine. One thing to note that if that is the tax rate voted approval moving forward, this will be the third year with the same tax rate at fifty-two ninety-nine for next year. That is the... It is a discussion and action on the proposed tax rate and take record vote and schedule public hearing. The public hearing is scheduled to be September the twelfth, 2022. That would be our first City Council meeting of September.
Are there any questions for Mr. Bettis? Is there a motion?
I make the motion to approve.
Second.
It requires a record vote. Mayor, it's individual, but that's a stage of what they might...
Okay. There's the motion and a second, and so now, we're gonna take the record votes. Ms. Jessica?
Aye.
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 Okay, it's a five-zero vote unanimously?
At point five two nine.
At point five two nine nine, which is the tax rate, last year's, actually the third year in a row.
Yes, it'll be the third year. Yes, correct.
Yes, okay. All righty.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So the next item, we're going to, again, move a little bit on the schedule, so we're going to go to item thirty-four. And Chief Sanchez?
Reading, Mayor and Council. Item thirty-four, authorization to purchase a Type One ambulance from Sidney Martins Emergency Group, L.L.C. The Mission Department is seeking authorization to purchase ambulance and, with a maintenance package from Sidney Martins Group, utilizing ARPA funds for a twenty-twenty-two DeMire Ford four fifty Type One ambulance through a emergency purchase due to chassis availability in the total amount cost of three hundred and fifty-four thousand five hundred and fifty dollars via H.G.A.C., AM ten dash twenty EMS. Staff and City Council, City Manager recommend approval.
Anyone have any questions or discussion?
Madam Mayor, I have a question.
Yes.
So, Chief, with regards to this new ambulance, is there a reason why? Explain to us kind of what you talked about briefly in, at the workshop, where these ambulances are already manufactured, they're ready to go, as opposed to one that we would order to build? Is that correct?
That's, that's correct. The one I'm proposing is currently in production. You know, it's not completed yet. It is a demo that we're trying to get in place. If we don't get these chassis, which are hard availability at this point, you know, it's recommended from eighteen to twenty-four months before a potential opportunity, as per sales rep, owners stating that they cannot promise a chassis no less than eighteen or up to twenty-four months. So obviously, there's multiple vendors that, that I have checked with. Obviously, I want to maintain the same apparatus that we have with Medic One, which is a DeMire. And so, like I said, at this point, this is what available with Sidney Martins. There's a well as one in February and April that are scheduled as demos.
Mayor, would, I don't know, you done?
Was that good?
Yes, ma'am.
I don't remember the budget numbers or exactly how much with this. I understand it's ARPA funds, but do we have the numbers already? Would like to see before I make a decision personally, to see where we're going to end with the ARPA funds. And I would like to wait until we get, we finish the budget and see whether this falls within, within our budget.
Let's, Madam Mayor.
I think this, I'm just going to put in my two cents here, but at the workshop, we, we moved forward with ordering this, this, this unit. Is that correct, Chief?
Yes, that's why I'm requesting an emergency purchase.
Right.
In regards to this, this unit.
So it's already been ordered, as per the conversation and direction that we had at the workshop.
And, and Madam Mayor, as far as, if I may, ask Mr. Sanchez, when we talk about an emergency purchase, what was the basis for the emergency?
The basis is the availability of the unit. Obviously, this is a international, national company, so anybody can do the purchase order or sign the agreement in regards to the purchase, and that will alleviate us, you know, getting that unit. So that was the reason for the, the purchase in regards to availability with Sidney Martins.
Okay, and then they allow you to come back to council for council approval? Is that the way that works?
Well, you know, in regards to that, obviously, I provided them a purchase order, as well as after that, you know, signing the agreement in regards to the purchase of that ambulance.
Madam Mayor, if I may make a suggestion, and I know we have another item on the agenda, item number thirty-six, wherein, and I know that's not what we're talking about right now, but wherein there's a solicitation for proposals, would it be possible if I could move to table this item at least until we've discussed item thirty-six?
Yes, and actually, item thirty-six was, there was going to be, we were going to go into executive session, so if it's okay with everyone, we can go into executive session now and discuss items thirty-four, thirty-five, and thirty-six. Is that okay?
As well as thirty-seven and thirty-eight.
As well as thirty-seven and thirty-eight, yes. So that we don't have to go back out. Yes. Okay, is there a motion?
Mayor, I move to run to executive session pursuant to B.T.C.A. Government Code, Section five five, point six zero one.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second to go into executive session. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. We'll be right back. Hold on. Okay. There's a motion?
Mayor, I move to run to executive session pursuant to B.T.C.A. Government Code, Section five five, point six zero one.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second to go into executive session. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. We'll be right back. Hold on. Okay. We don't have any public hearings and there are no finding and zoning recommendations, so we're going to go to a consent agenda. Is there anything that needs to be pulled and addressed individually?
Mayor, I move to approve the consent agenda items six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, and thirteen.
Second.
Here's a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as presented, and item thirteen has a resolution number of seventeen eighty-seven. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. We'll be right back. Hold on. Okay. We don't have any public hearings and there are no finding and zoning recommendations, so we're going to go to a consent agenda. Is there anything that needs to be pulled and addressed individually?
Mayor, I move to approve the consent agenda items six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, and thirteen.
Second.
Here's a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as presented, and item thirteen has a resolution number of seventeen eighty-seven. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. We'll be right back. Hold on. Okay. We don't have any public hearings and there are no finding and zoning recommendations, so we're going to go to a consent agenda. Is there anything that needs to be pulled and addressed individually?
Mayor, I move to approve the consent agenda items six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, and thirteen.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second to go into executive session. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. We'll be right back. Hold on. Okay. We don't have any public hearings and there are no finding and zoning recommendations, so we're going to go to a consent agenda. Is there anything that needs to be pulled and addressed individually?
Mayor, I move to approve the consent agenda items six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, and thirteen.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second to go into executive session. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. We'll be right back. Hold on. Okay. We don't have any public hearings and there are no finding and zoning recommendations, so we're going to go to a consent agenda. Is there anything that needs to be pulled and addressed individually?
Mayor, I move to approve the consent agenda items six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, and thirteen.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second to go into executive session. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. We'll be right back. Hold on. Okay. We don't have any public hearings and there are no finding and zoning recommendations, so we're going to go to a consent agenda. Is there anything that needs to be pulled and addressed individually?
Mayor, I move to approve the consent agenda items six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, and thirteen.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second to go into executive session. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. We'll be right back. Hold on. Okay. We don't have any public hearings and there are no finding and zoning recommendations, so we're going to go to a consent agenda. Is there anything that needs to be pulled and addressed individually?
Mayor, I move to approve the consent agenda items six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, and thirteen.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second to go into executive session. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. We'll be right back. Hold on. Okay. We don't have any public hearings and there are no finding and zoning recommendations, so we're going to go to a consent agenda. Is there anything that needs to be pulled and addressed individually?
Mayor, I move to approve the consent agenda items six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, and thirteen.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second to go into executive session. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. We'll be right back. Hold on. Okay. We don't have any public hearings and there are no finding and zoning recommendations, so we're going to go to a consent agenda. Is there anything that needs to be pulled and addressed individually?
Mayor, I move to approve the consent agenda items six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, and thirteen.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second to go into executive session. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. We'll be right back. Hold on. Okay. We don't have any public hearings and there are no finding and zoning recommendations, so we're going to go to a consent agenda. Is there anything that needs to be pulled and addressed individually?
Mayor, I move to approve the consent agenda items six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, and thirteen.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second to go into executive session. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. We'll be right back. Hold on. Okay. We don't have any public hearings and there are no finding and zoning recommendations, so we're going to go to a consent agenda. Is there anything that needs to be pulled and addressed individually?
Mayor, I move to approve the consent agenda items six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, and thirteen.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second to go into executive session. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. We'll be right back. Hold on. Okay. We don't have any public hearings and there are no finding and zoning recommendations, so we're going to go to a consent agenda. Is there anything that needs to be pulled and addressed individually?
Mayor, I move to approve the consent agenda items six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, and thirteen.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second to go into executive session. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. We'll be right back. Hold on. Okay. We don't have any public hearings and there are no finding and zoning recommendations, so we're going to go to a consent agenda. Is there anything that needs to be pulled and addressed individually?
Mayor, I move to approve the consent agenda items six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, and thirteen.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second to go into executive session. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. We'll be right back. Hold on. Okay. We don't have any public hearings and there are no finding and zoning recommendations, so we're going to go to a consent agenda. Is there anything that needs to be pulled and addressed individually?
Mayor, I move to approve the consent agenda items six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, and thirteen.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second to go into executive session. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. We'll be right back. Hold on. Okay. We don't have any public hearings and there are no finding and zoning recommendations, so we're going to go to a consent agenda. Is there anything that needs to be pulled and addressed individually?
Mayor, I move to approve the consent agenda items six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, and thirteen.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second to go into executive session. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. We'll be right back. Hold on. Okay. We don't have any public hearings and there are no finding and zoning recommendations, so we're going to go to a consent agenda. Is there anything that needs to be pulled and addressed individually?
Mayor, I move to approve the consent agenda items six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, and thirteen.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second to go into executive session. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. We'll be right back. Hold on. Okay. We don't have any public hearings and there are no finding and zoning recommendations, so we're going to go to a consent agenda. Is there anything that needs to be pulled and addressed individually?
Mayor, I move to approve the consent agenda items six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, and thirteen.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second to go into executive session. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. We'll be right back. Hold on. Okay. We don't have any public hearings and there are no finding and zoning recommendations, so we're going to go to a consent agenda. Is there anything that needs to be pulled and addressed individually?
Mayor, I move to approve the consent agenda items six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, and thirteen.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second to go into executive session. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. We'll be right back. Hold on. Okay. We don't have any public hearings and there are no finding and zoning recommendations, so we're going to go to a consent agenda. Is there anything that needs to be pulled and addressed individually?
Mayor, I move to approve the consent agenda items six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, and thirteen.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second to go into executive session. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. We'll be right back. Hold on. Okay. We don't have any public hearings and there are no finding and zoning recommendations, so we're going to go to a consent agenda. Is there anything that needs to be pulled and addressed individually?
Mayor, I move to approve the consent agenda items six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, and thirteen.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second to go into executive session. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. We'll be right back. Hold on. Okay. We don't have any public hearings and there are no finding and zoning recommendations, so we're going to go to a consent agenda. Is there anything that needs to be pulled and addressed individually?
Mayor, I move to approve the consent agenda items six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, and thirteen.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second to go into executive session. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. We'll be right back. Hold on. Okay. We don't have any public hearings and there are no finding and zoning recommendations, so we're going to go to a consent agenda. Is there anything that needs to be pulled and addressed individually?
Mayor, I move to approve the consent agenda items six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, and thirteen.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second to go into executive session. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no.
Okay, is there a motion to...
I want to reconvene.
First motion?
Second.
And a second to reconvene, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
And all opposed say no, motion carries unanimously. We're gonna go to item number thirty-four. We've already heard the presentation, unless we have any questions or concerns.
Madam Mayor, on this item if I may?
Yes.
This is an item in which was previously discussed at a workshop and... This is an item in which was previously discussed at a workshop and there was a consensus to go out and purchase the ambulance prior to any other discussions. So this would be more of a ministerial act on behalf of the council, that's my understanding. Is that correct, Mayor?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, I move for approval, Mayor.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the purchase of a type-one ambulance from Sidens Martins Emergency Group. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no, motion carries unanimously five-zero. The next item?
Item thirty-five, authorization to purchase ambulance equipment from Stryker. The Mission Fire Department is seeking authorization to purchase ambulance equipment with a seven-year pro-care preventive service package from Stryker utilizing Opera funds, purchase costing the amount of one hundred and nineteen thousand, four hundred and eighty-nine dollars and forty-six cents via sole-source vendor of this product. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
Any questions or discussion?
This is the same thing as number thirty-four, correct?
Yes.
I move to approve.
There's a motion to approve?
Second.
And a second, all in favor say aye.
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 All opposed say no, motion carries unanimously five-zero. The next item is authorization to solicit proposals for nine-one-one emergency ambulance services.
This was discussed in executive session, ma'am, there's no action, but there is some directive given to the city manager.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
So there will be no action on item number thirty-six. And we're gonna move on to the items that were discussed in executive session, items thirty-seven and thirty-eight.
Yes, ma'am, number thirty-seven is a first known matter, due discussion regarding firefighter Samuel Carrion. The motion needed is to approve temporary paid fee pending medical release back to active duty, not to exceed eighteen months.
I'm want to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the temporary paid fee for firefighter Samuel Carrion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no, motion carries unanimously five-zero.
And then thirty-eight, the Madam Mayor, is a real property, the motion needed here is to proceed to the use of eminent domain.
I'm want to approve.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to move item number thirty-six to eminent domain as discussed in executive session. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no, motion carries unanimously.
Mayor, that will have resolution seventeen-eighty-eight.
Seventeen-eighty-eight.
Yes, ma'am.
All right. So we are going to move to item?
Fourteen, ma'am.
Number fourteen.
Good afternoon, Madam Council. City Manager, item number fourteen is a homestead exemption variance for the east half of Lot Nine, Block One, Mission Acres subdivision is currently Zone R-two duplex fourplex. The applicant is Sofia Su Peña. This tract is located on the northwest corner of Lee Street and Green Lawn. The applicant proposes to construct a single-family residence. On November ten, twenty-fourteen, the city council passed the homestead exemption variance ordinance which allows for homesteads to be granted various waivers to city subdivision requirements if only the lot is being proposed for the applicant's personal single-family residence. In this case, that is, that needs to be done within one year. PNC and staff recommended approval, subject to compliance with all homestead exemption variance requirements. This is not a public hearing, this item is now before you.
I'm want to approve.
Second.
Any discussion or question? All opposed for a vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no, motion carries unanimously five-zero. Next item?
Item number fifteen is a preliminary plat approval for Las Esperanza subdivision. This is a tract of land containing twenty-seven point twenty-two acres of land, being part of portion of Lot one-eighty-three Johnny Sherry subdivision. It's currently zone duplex fourplex and multifamily. The developer is Dragonfly sixty-two sixty-five LLC and the engineer is Javier Nohozan Engineering. The property is located along the east side of Glasscut Road approximately fifteen-hundred feet north of U.S. Expressway eighty-three. The developer is proposing sixty-six lots with a mixed use of forty-one duplex fourplex and twenty-five multifamily residential. It would be in compliance with city utilities. City engineer has reviewed and approved the drainage report. PNC and staff recommend approval, subject to payment of capital sewer recovery fees and park fees. This item is now before you.
I'm want to approve.
There's a motion?
Second.
And a second, are there any questions or discussion? And call for the vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no, motion carries unanimously five-zero. Next item?
Item number sixteen is a preliminary plat approval for GEO subdivision. This is a seven-point-five-zero acre tract of land being the south, seven-point-fifty acres of Lot One Nick Dolphin subdivision, number five. This is in our rural ETJ. The developer is Antioch G Cantu Garza. The engineers Quintanilla Hedley and Associates. The proposed division is located on the east side of Dolphin Road, approximately half a mile north of Three Mile. The developer is proposing five lots, one being commercial. The developer is requesting variances for lots two to five having frontages of twenty-five foot width where the minimum requirement is fifty. They will be complying with utilities. City engineer has reviewed and approved the drainage report. In this case, PNC and staff recommends denial since they're not meeting the city of Mission subdivision standards and model subdivision rules and denial of all variances.
Do we have any questions or concerns? Questions for staff?
So you're recommending deny and planning and zoning?
They're wanting to have twenty-five-foot front, the width of the lots, and the minimum required for any standards would be fifty. So that's the reason for the deny.
So from fifty, they're going to twenty-five?
They're, they wanna leave twenty-five.
And Ms. Suzie, they were told?
Yes, but they still wanted to pursue, see if they would grant the variance.
That's a big difference.
I think they can find another solution to still get the number of lots that they want and comply with the city ordinance.
There is, there is, they can meet the fifty feet there. They were just trying to see if the council was willing to consider their request.
All right.
I'm want to deny for planning and zoning and staff.
I second.
There's a motion and a second to deny the preliminary plat for GEO subdivision. All in favor to deny the request, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no, motion carries unanimously, the request is denied. Next item?
Next item is number seventeen, is a preliminary plat approval for Garden Path subdivision. This is a tract of land containing eight-point-eighty-seven acres being a part of portion out of Lot two-sixty-six Johnny Sherry subdivision. This is currently zone R-one-T townhouse. The developer is Decca Investment LLC and the engineer is M-two Engineering field LLC. The proposed subdivision is located along the west side of Taylor Road approximately five-hundred feet north of East Twenty-Fifth Street. The developer is proposing eighty-eight townhomes and two lots will be designated for stormwater detention. They will be complying with city utilities. City engineer has reviewed and approved the drainage report. PNC and staff recommends approval, subject to payment of capital sewer recovery fees and park fees, provide water district exclusion, and comply with all other format findings. This item is now before you.
There's no exceptions, right? Mayor, I'm want to approve.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the preliminary plat for Garden Path subdivision. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no, motion carries unanimously five-zero. Next item?
Item number eighteen is a preliminary plat approval for Eduardo subdivision, number twenty. This is a nineteen-point-sixty-seven acre tract of land out of lots forty-seven dash four and forty-eight dash four west addition to Sheraland subdivision. This is in our rural ETJ. The developer is Izaguirre Real Estate Holdings and the engineer is Izaguirre Engineering Group LLC. The proposed division is located on the west side of Trosper Road approximately half a mile north of Mile Six. The developer is proposing seventy-nine single-family residential lots. The water belongs to Sheraland Water Supply Corporation. For sewer, it would be addressed by an internal Aiden sewer line system as it ties to an existing Aiden sewer line located on the south of this development. City engineer has reviewed and approved the drainage report. Staff and PNC recommends approval, subject to meeting model subdivision rules, complying with street alignment policy, and meeting any comments from the county planning department. This item is now before you.
I'm want to approve based on the recommendation of planning and zoning staff and subject to the three items listed on the agenda.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. I just have a quick question, so the sewer system belongs to who?
McCollum.
McCollum, okay. All right, any other questions? I'm gonna call for the vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no, motion carries. And that would be a four-zero vote.
Thank you.
The next item?
Yes, Madam Council, good evening. These are board appointments on some vacant seats that we currently have on Mission Economic Development Authority Tax Increment Reinvestment Zone and Youth Advocacy Advisory Board. On Mission Economic Development Authority, Mayor's recommendation is to appoint Jose Vargas and Pete Jaramillo to the vacant positions. These were due to resignations. And also appoint Councilman Abiela Flores to the alternate mayor position. These terms will expire twelve-thirty-one of twenty-two. On the Tax Increment Reinvestment Zone, appoint Mr. Albert Chapa, who is here with us today, to the vacant position, term to expire twelve-thirty-one-twenty-three, and to appoint David Panoli as chairman. Under Youth Advocacy Advisory Board, appoint Christina Alanis to the vacant position due to resignation, term to expire twelve-thirty-one of twenty-two.
I'm want to approve.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the appointments as presented, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no, motion carries, again, the vote is four-zero.
Thank you.
And congratulations, Albert, and thank you very much for stepping up, thank you.
Good evening, Madam Council. Item twenty is authorization to purchase via sole-source from CloudLink by Biblioteca for electronic services and library material. We're asking for authorization to purchase electronic library material, ebooks, and audiobooks from Biblioteca to use on their Cloud Library platform that would be made available for checkout to patrons from a computer or electronic device as long as they have a library card from one of the public libraries in Hidalgo County. Biblioteca provides certain products that can only be acquired through them, namely the Cloud Library platform and the CloudLink subscription, which is designed and manufactured exclusively by Biblioteca. These funds are from the county of Hidalgo, who funds our county e-library project. We have an interlocal in place between the county of Hidalgo and the city of Mission that was approved on February fourteen, twenty-twenty-two. This agreement allows the county to continue to pay funds on behalf of and disburse funds to Spirit Memorial Library for contractual services and library materials.
I'm want to approve.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to authorize the purchase as discussed, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no, motion carries unanimously five-zero.
Thank you.
Next item? Chief?
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. City Manager, authorization to enter into an interlocal agreement between the city of Mission and the city of Peñitas to provide temporary housing for prisoners. The Mission Police Department agrees to make use of their holding facility for prisoners of the Peñitas Police Department, subject to availability of space based on the facility's capacity. The interlocal is for the temporary housing and detention of prisoners awaiting arraignment. The temporary housing of prisoners will be at a cost of fifty-four dollars per prisoner per day. The cost includes detention, transportation, and meal costs. The term of the agreement is for one year commencing on October first, twenty-twenty-two, and ending September thirtieth, twenty-twenty-three. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
Want to approve.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the interlocal agreement between the city of Mission and the city of Peñitas, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no, motion carries unanimously. Next item, Chief?
Item number twenty-two, authorization to enter into an interlocal agreement between the city of Mission and the city of Palmhurst to provide temporary housing for prisoners. The Mission Police Department agrees to make use of their holding facility for prisoners of the Palmhurst Police Department, subject to the availability of space based on facility capacity. The interlocal is for the temporary housing and detention of prisoners awaiting arraignment. The temporary housing of prisoners will be at a cost of fifty-four dollars per prisoner per day. The cost includes detention, transportation, and meal costs. The term of the agreement is for one year commencing on October first, twenty-twenty-two, and ending September thirtieth, twenty-twenty-three. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
I'm want to approve.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the interlocal agreement between the city of Mission and the city of Palmhurst, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no, motion carries unanimously five-zero.
Mayor, I just have a quick question, I know that we've just approved them, if I may?
Sure.
Just with regards to, I know we've had these interlocals for years and I think they're good, I just, with regards to the liability that's passed on to the city, do we take on additional liability, does the cities that are housing them over here, do they hold on to that liability, what happens?
Well, certainly there's liability on both sides, always.
But is that, all of that reflected in the agreement, do you know?
It is, absolutely.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chief. Next item?
Good afternoon, Madam City Council, item number twenty-three, approval of work authorization number two with B-two-Z engineering for construction management, inspection, and material testing services for Esperanza Drainage Improvement Project. Professional services for work authorization number two entails construction management, inspection, and material testing services for Esperanza Drainage Improvement Project. Estimated cost work authorization is three-hundred-and-thirty-one-thousand, two-hundred-and-thirty dollars with two cents. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
I'm want to approve.
Move for approval, second. Okay, there's a motion and a second to authorize number two with B-two-Z engineering for construction management, inspection, and material testing for Esperanza. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
I'm sorry?
Can I ask a question? What was the total cost for their services on that particular project?
For this project, the construction was five-point-four million dollars for Esperanza, and the construction management, testing, and inspecting is three-hundred-and-thirty-one-thousand, two-hundred-and-thirty dollars with two cents.
So we're gonna be done with that one, with that particular, for their services or no?
For their services, for the construction management and testing.
For that particular project?
For that project only, yes.
For that project only, yes, and they also currently, they did also, they signed a management also, B-two-Z. Now we're engaging them for the construction management, testing, and inspecting.
Thank you, sir.
So we have a motion and a second, right? Okay, I'm gonna call for the vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no, motion carries unanimously five-zero. Next item?
Thank you, Madam Council. Item number twenty-four, approval of work authorization number three with B-two-Z engineering for construction management, inspection, material testing, and services for Gabriel Drainage Improvement Project. Estimated cost of work authorization is one-hundred-and-thirty-nine-thousand, five-hundred-and-thirty-eight dollars with fifty cents. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
I'm want to approve.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second to approve the work authorization number three with B-two-Z engineering for construction management, inspection, and testing services for Gabriel Drainage Improvement Project. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no, motion carries unanimously. Next item?
Thank you, Madam Council. Item number twenty-five, approval of work authorization number four with B-two-Z engineering for construction management, inspection, material testing services for Stewart Drainage Improvement Project. Estimated cost work authorization is two-hundred-and-four-thousand, nine-hundred-and-seventy-one dollars with sixty cents. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
Move for approval?
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the work authorization number four with B-two-Z engineering for construction management, inspection, and material testing services for Stewart A Drainage Improvement Project. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no, motion carries unanimously five-zero.
Thank you.
Mayor? Mayor, um, I mean, we go through a lot of different numbers, so many different projects. Whenever you present this to us, is there a way, I was telling Randy, that you can, how much do we have on the budget for this particular project? How much have we spent? What is left over, I mean, I just wanna make sure that we are, I mean, it will help me as a reminder of how much we have per project.
Sure, we can, uh, put a spreadsheet together and tally about the amounts, within the construction, the design, and the construction management and testing. We can do that, yes, sir.
Thank you, Chief, kind of like an ongoing spreadsheet that's, you know, gets improved.
Yes.
Weekly.
Sure, we can do that.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Next item, Mr. Perez.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council, item twenty-seven is a discussion of possible action on modifying COVID-nineteen city of Mission guidelines. We are requesting to amend the protocols regarding quarantine. If, uh, you all, uh, might be, uh, recall that CDC, um, made some, uh, changes, modifications to their protocols, and the changes would be in accordance to their CDC guidelines. And the guidelines state that there i- is no longer a need for quarantine of any kind of exposure to COVID-nineteen. Uh, city of Mission will no longer require an employee to quarantine on any type of exposure. So basically, uh, we have amended our, our current, uh, chart that we, we hand out to our employees, and so basically if a, uh, cur, previously an employee that lives with someone that tests positive or has some sort of exposure, uh, we would, uh, have them quarantine as well. However, based on the new CDC guidelines, it would be only if their, uh, employees experiencing, uh, COVID symptoms, they get tested, and if not, they return to work and test, uh, after, uh, five days if, if they start, uh, seeing any symptoms. So that's, uh, that's what we currently have right now.
Mayor, I'm going to approve.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the, uh, plan of action for and to modify the COVID-nineteen guidelines, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no, motion carries unanimously, five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Benson? JP?
Mr. Benson. On behalf of Mr. Brad Benson, I will be presenting the next three items, approval of interlocal agreement between the city of Mission and Sherland Independent School District for pool use by both Sherland ISD Junior High School, also Senior High School, for the year twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three school year, at a cost of ten thousand dollars, three-hundred-and-fourteen dollars. Staff and City Manager recommends approval.
I'm going to approve.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the interlocal agreement between the city of Mission and Sherland Independent School District for pool use, for an amount of ten thousand, three-hundred-and-forty dollars. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no, motion carries unanimously, five zero.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, item number twenty-nine, approval of interlocal agreement between city of Mission and Mission Consolidated Independent School District for pool use, in case of inclement weather or mechanical failure of the MISD pool facility. At an determined cost, a disagreement is based on as-needed occurrence, staff and City Manager recommends approval.
I'm going to approve.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the interlocal agreement between the city of Mission and Mission Consolidated Independent School District for pool use. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no, motion carries unanimously, five zero.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, item number thirty, approval of purchase of exercise equipment via buyboard contract number five-nine-two dash nineteen, from Craftsman Commercial Playground and Water Parks for placement in Birdwell Park, as required on the Texas Parks Wildlife Grant for Mission Tennis Center at Birdwell Park. Purchase and delivery price of this exercise equipment via state-approved buyboard contract number five-nine-two dash nineteen, in the amount of forty thousand, six-hundred-and-thirty-one dollars with thirty-five cents. Staff and City Manager recommends approval.
Move for approval?
Second.
There's a motion and a second? And I just wanted to point out that this is a requirement, um, as per the TPWD grant, right?
That is correct, Mayor, as per the grant that we had for the, the tennis courts, where we improved our Birdwell Park.
Right.
It's a requirement.
Okay.
I go under that parking lot.
How much was that grant for?
That, that grant was approximately seven-hundred-and-fifty thousand.
So we have a motion?
Yes, ma'am, I, I made a motion, she made a motion, I second.
Okay, so it's a motion and a second, okay. Alright, uh, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no, motion carries unanimously, five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, JP.
Next item.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, item thirty-one is seeking authorization to accept a grant award for the FY twenty-two, twenty-three Regional Solid Waste Grant Program with the Lower Rio Grande Valley Development Council. The total grant award is twenty-five thousand and will allow the rehabilitation and expansion of the city's recycling drop-off center, which currently sits at, uh, Quica de la Garza and Fifteenth Street. The city will support a ten percent in-kind match through in-house landscaping for a total of two thousand five hundred. The total project cost is twenty-seven thousand, five hundred. Staff and City Manager recommend approval.
I'm going to approve.
Second.
There's a motion and a, and a second to accept the grant, um, the Regional Solid Waste Grant Program with the LRGVDC. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no, motion carries unanimously, five zero. Next item. Ms. Angie.
Angie, right.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council, item number thirty-two is the approval of the June twenty-twenty-two tax collection report. The twenty-twenty-one total adjusted tax levy for taxes was twenty-six million, twelve thousand, six-hundred-and-seventy-one dollars and ninety-nine cents, and the amount of the collections as of June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-two is twenty-five million, ninety thousand, four-hundred-and-fifty-three dollars and sixty-six cents, which represents ninety-six-point-four-five percent of the total twenty-twenty-one tax levy. The total adjusted tax levy for delinquent taxes was two million, four-hundred-and-eleven thousand, five-hundred-and-eighty-four dollars and sixty cents, and the amount of collections as of June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-two is five-hundred-and-eighty-three thousand, thirty-three dollars and two cents, which represents twenty-four-point-eighteen percent of the total tax levies from previous years. Staff and City Manager recommend approval.
I'm going to approve.
Second, there's a motion and a second to approve the tax collection report as presented, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no, motion carries unanimously, five zero. Next item.
Item number thirty-three is the approval of the June twenty-twenty-two financial statements. Total revenues for the month were six million, six-hundred-and-ten thousand, one-hundred-and-thirty-two dollars, and total expenditures were eleven million, nine-hundred-and-twelve thousand, eight-hundred-and-eight dollars, leaving an ending fund balance of thirty-one million, five-hundred-and-forty-four thousand, four-hundred-and-seventy-seven dollars. Staff and City Manager recommend approval.
I'm going to approve.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the, uh, the, uh, June twenty-twenty-two financial statements, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no, motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
And I think that takes care of all of the business at hand.
Yes, correct.
Do you have any comments?
Yes, I, a couple of comments, uh, we, uh, the city of Mission is currently, uh, going to host on August the thirtieth, the Code Enforcement Valley Summit. Uh, it, it comprises of, um, all the valley, uh, cities, uh, to include Rockport and, and others, uh, that are, will be hosting that at the Mission Event Center from eight to five, again, that's the Code Enforcement Valley Summit. Also, uh, on the CDBG Department will be, uh, hosting a one-stop shop, and this is for assistance with rent, mortgage, and utilities, uh, due to COVID-nineteen. This would be Wednesday, August twenty-fourth, from nine AM to twelve PM at the Mission Seat Building, and that's in, uh, in partnership with the Affordable Homes of South Texas as well. Also, a community event, uh, that will be, uh, hosting September the seventh, which we heard earlier, the Childhood Cancer Awareness Gold Walk. That would be September seventh, at, from seven-thirty to eight-thirty at our Mission Police Department, and then our, uh, we will be having music at the park, uh, September ninth, twenty-twenty-two, from six-thirty to nine-thirty at Leo Peña Placita Park. We had to reschedule our August, uh, due to the inclement weather, and, uh, the last thing is that, uh, we, we will be, uh, our city offices will close Monday, September fifth, in observance of Labor Day, that's all I have.
Alright, uh, any comments by Council?
Thank you.
No comments.
No comments, Mayor.
The only thing I want to say is, uh, I want to wish everyone a very, very, uh, uh, successful and safe school year this year. Um, and I want to thank Mission PD, that's been instrumental in the first days of, of school, uh, thank you again. It was non-incidental, so that's a good thing, so thank, thank you very much for that. So, that being said, this, uh, meeting is now adjourned, thank you.